Good morning and half a day. The Committee on General Government Operations Appropriation Housing is now called to order. Today is Wednesday, November 30th. The time now is nine o'clock. Notice for this public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Thursday, November 17, and then November 23rd. Again, today is Wednesday, November 30th, and it is now nine o'clock. The following items will be heard this morning, specifically the appointment of Dr. Robert S. Jack to the Guam Ethics Commission, a term length of four years. Those testifying on behalf of Dr. Robert Jack are invited to the panel, and they are Mr. Jesse Kinga, and we have Dr. Jack here, and we also have a Ruben Bugarian. But are you going to be testifying or no? Okay, but you're here to support. Good job. Thank you. General rules for this public hearing, written testimony shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide my legislative staff with your written testimony for photocopying. Testimonies may be read, and lengthy testimony should be summarized to about five minutes. But if you need additional time, Dr. Jack will provide you, will allow you that additional time. Those testifying be allowed to present oral testimony. Once you are done, please remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony, as may be desired by members of the committee. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of any senator or any individual's testifying is not permitted. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the public hearing room. Proper form of decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for this proceedings. Individuals who failed to maintain proper form of decorum may be or will be restricted from providing oral testimony and will be escorted from the room. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone. Please state your name and your title for the record. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me. We have Senator Telo Taidigui, and we have Senator Frank Blas. And with that, I'd ask, I normally would ask the appointee to provide his testimony, but I'm going to ask Mr. Kinga from the Ethics Commission to provide his testimony first, and I'm going to save you for last, Dr. Jack. Mr. Kinga, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Half a day and good morning to Chairman Senator Sinagustin and Senators Frank Blas Jr. and Telo Taidigui. My name is Jesse Kinga. I'm the Executive Director of the Guam Ethics Commission, and I'm here to testify in support of Dr. Jack's confirmation. I offered this strong letter of support for the confirmation of Dr. Robert Jack to serve a second term on the Guam Ethics Commission. I have the deepest personal and professional respect for the Commissioner. He is an intelligent, dedicated, passionate, and accomplished individual. In addition to his distinguished professional career, Commissioner Jack has gone above and beyond in service of our community. He currently serves as one of six inaugural members named and confirmed to the Guam Ethics Commission. In his role as a Commissioner, he equally led and accomplished developing the mission of the Commission and secure its first appropriation in the government of Guam's 2021 budget. Commissioner Jack further supported the formulation of the Commission's public policy initiatives, which led to the enactment of two new public laws. These include mandating ethics training for all employees of the government of Guam, Public Law 3625, and reaffirming the Guam Ethics Commission as an independent and autonomous agency within the government of Guam, Public Law 3628. Furthermore, Commissioner Jack's background and passion proved to be invaluable, an invaluable addition to a balanced and fair deliberation of all complaints heard by the Commission. He was involved in preparing and approving the draft administrative rules pertaining to the execution of Chapter 15, Title IV Guam Code annotated. I therefore respectfully ask for the legislature's confirmation of his reappointment to the Commission. Sujus Masing.
Thank you, Mr. Kinga. Dr. Jack, sir, your testimony for your continuance with the Ethics Commission, sir.
Thank you very much, sir. Good morning, Senators. It's a privilege and a pleasure to be here, to appear before you for this reappointment. I am willing and able to answer any and all questions that you may have. I think the work of the Ethics Commission is paramount, particularly in the climate in which we find ourselves. Transparency is important, and that's what we strive to achieve in the work of the Commission, following all the laws that govern our operation. It would be an honor for me to continue serving as Commissioner with the current ethics commissioners that we have. So again, I feel honored to be a part of this, and I look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you, Dr. Jack. Senator Telo, do you have any question for the Commissioner Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning to my colleagues, and good morning to those who are here present today. So this is your second term, correct, that you're going after?
That is correct.
So why would you want to continue to serve, especially on this board?
It's an important role, first of all, and I don't believe that I had the opportunity to do as much as I would have wanted to, given the length of time it took for us to really get rolling, for a number of reasons, particularly because of COVID. We, thanks, I have to compliment Mr. Kinga on his really hard, his diligence and hard work to really get us to where we are now, but it took a while for a number of reasons. So I don't think that any of the Commissioners really had a chance to get into the actual work of the Ethics Commission until very recently. So I'd like to continue to see where that goes.
With reading your application, I noticed you have no government background whatsoever, not even, it doesn't show any, like, being part of any, like Knights of Columbus or anything like that, served in our community. So this is the first time, according to your application, that you've done anything for the community of Guam? How long have you been on Guam, by the way?
I moved to Guam in 2007, so it's been 15-plus years. And you are correct, this is my first involvement with any sort of government agency.
And how are you going, what have you been doing to kind of give more of a perspective of a government employee by understanding government on Guam? What have you done to, you know, put you in as an expert, especially when it comes to making these decisions for ethics?
I wouldn't consider myself an expert, first of all. I do have a lot of experience with the community of Guam because of my role as an ophthalmologist. I interact with, you know, anywhere between 30 and 50 patients a day, along with their family members, for the last 15 years that I've been here. So I have a lot of interaction with the citizens of Guam, the islanders, mostly locals. So I feel that I get a sense of the type of community that I'm a part of now. I do think I bring to the table a sense of fairness, as well as compassion. So those are my strengths.
Have you?
I think I can look at whatever's presented from a fair vantage point.
Have you made any effort to read some of the reports coming out of Civil Service, the Civil Service Commission?
I have not had a chance to read in depth any of the reports coming out. I have been apprised by Jesse of everything that's significant, that should be of concern to the Commissioners, and I feel comfortable with Jesse providing me the information that I need.
You know, this board, Doctor, is a very important board. You know, it changes people's lives. It can change people's lives. And because of its importance, I think that all the Commissioners, not just, you know, I'm not just picking on you right now, but I think all Commissioners should make an effort, a concerted effort to go beyond and really look at other obstacles or other, not appointments, but cases that have been, you know, through the Civil Service Commission, to see what's been going on in that perspective and how they've been ruling and, you know, I just think there should be more emphasis on just educating yourself on that. I mean, you're a doctor, that's a totally different REM, you know, that you deal with. And so I think that, I appreciate the fact that you want to step up and serve again in the community of Guam, but I also think that there should be more of a concerted effort to, you know, do more research on something as important as this. I mean, this is, again, I can emphasize how important this board is, because it does change people's lives. It can. So I appreciate again the opportunity. And Mr. Kinga, did you want to say something? Go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to echo, I absolutely agree with that statement, and to provide more background to Dr. Jack's earlier response. Part of their initiative reflects on Title V's implementation of the Board and Commission's board training. I think the Ethics Commission happens to be the only board to actually comply with that mandate. So they get together annually to talk about all significant updates, not just to relevant case law and issues that deal with civil service, but they also deal with improvement and changes to the procurement law. We recognize that there are implications with procurement acts that might lead to an ethics investigation. So those are some concepts that you'll be pleased to hear we actually get involved in, and that's through the leadership of the Commission we have currently.
Thank you, Mr. Kinga. And you're up to date on your website?
Yes, we are.
Okay, I'm looking at it right now. Just wanted to make sure, because one thing about boards, they forget to update the website. I mean, you talk about transparency, this is the best way, so everyone knows what's going on. So again, thank you so much, and thank you for stepping up to the plate. Thank you.
And Senator Taidigui, on the website, I'm excited, maybe offline, Mr. Chair, I can share, we launched an online learning platform for ethics training, so that government employees who happen to be doing shift work, who can't attend a training in a regular eight-to-five work schedule, can register online and attend an asynchronous learning environment for them to accomplish.
I noticed that very well, sign up for training, online training, request for training.
Yes.
That's very good. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Taidigui. Senator Blas, do you have any questions for the appointee, Dr. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning. Thank you for being here, Dr. Jack. Thank you very much for your willingness and to be able to, again, step up again and be reappointed. But not a matter of concern, okay, but it's just for, when you've got an individual with, you know, your expertise, your profession, okay, and we're talking about now a commission, an ethics commission, and being in an ethics commission, you know, talk about being, you know, your subject matter expert on one side, and, okay, and then an ethics commission, which any profession, you know, has its own ethical standards as well. So in your own words, how would you feel you could contribute, or you have contributed, to the Ethics Commission based on your capacity and based on your ability and based on your experience? What value do you bring to that commission? The reason why I'm asking is a lot of times when you talk to, you know, we talk to commission members or individuals who want to be part of a commission, there are subject matter of this and a subject matter that is very relevant to that commission itself or to that. Ethics is broad, okay? And so, like I said, nothing to take away from what, you know, what you have, but I'm more interested in what you'd be able to provide.
Thank you, Senator. I appreciate the question. Medical ethics is something that is very important to me as a professional, as a doctor, as a physician. And there's so many, not everything is black and white, and I think you've got to come, you've got to approach any task knowing that there's quite a bit of gray in there. And I think, I see my job as a Commissioner as looking at all sides, considering the law and what is considered fair. And I would also lean on my age or maturity, because I've seen a lot and I've gone through a lot, and I think I bring that to the table as a Commissioner. I agree, it's a very, very crucial role that we play. And to reiterate, I don't think we've really, as Commissioners, we've really had a chance to really delve into the issues before, because of the various hurdles that we had to overcome to really get to this point. So I'm anxious now to move forward and actually do the job of an Ethics Commissioner. I'm looking forward to that.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'm pretty much satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Blas. And Dr. Jack, I know in the beginning, it took time first for the Ethics Commission to get its program together, and it's moving forward. I'm very comfortable with it. I'm just, actually just waiting to see who's going to start filing complaints, so the Ethics Commission can go to act, go to work. And I do look forward, and I do support your appointment. I haven't heard anything negative, I haven't seen anything negative. And after this hearing, we'll prepare the committee report, so we can submit it to the floor, so we can get you reconfirmed, hopefully in this month during our session. Unless you have anything else to say, sir, I'm happy, I'm happy you're willing to come, to stay on. Really, that's one of the keys. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Senator. There's one additional comment that I'd like to make here. I am hoping that with the right training of all the government employees, when they have, when they know what the laws are, what the rules are, what's ethical and what's not, I'm hoping we're obsolete. I'm hoping that we don't need to meet, to discuss anything ethical. I'm hoping that all the employ, I mean, it's a pipe dream, but it's the one I have, that everybody knows what the rules are and that we all know the consequences, and we can go from there.
Yes, sir. And if need be, if it's not in the law that everybody has to attend it, not just elected and management, maybe that's something we can be discussing in the near future with my colleagues, because we'll be returning in January, and then we can pursue that. But other than just drug testing, ethics training, everybody's got to register, because you got the online, there's, they're running out of excuses not to go to the course. We can make that and make them report out, or have you folks report out to the legislature that the filing numbers are going through it, and it's positive? Sending the strong message is the best, the best way to do this. Education. Thank you, Dr. Jack. And with that, there being no additional individuals testifying for Dr. Jack or for or against, the committee will, may submit, any individual may submit testimony to the mayor room or the Guam Legislature, or through my email at Senator Joe S. Sinagustin@gmail.com. And again, I want to thank everyone for attending this public hearing and for providing feedbacks and suggestions. The referral of appointment of Dr. Robert S. Jack's duty heard by the Committee on Public, and the public hearing is now adjourned. The time now is 9:20. Thank you, Dr. Jack, Mr. Kinga. Appreciate it. Please have a nice day. Take care. We'll just take a two-minute recess, we get ready for the next bill, which is Bill 363, and then immediately after that, we will follow up with Bill 348, Senator Telo's bill. All right? Thank you. Good morning and half a day. The Committee on General Government Operations Appropriation Housing is now called to order. Today is Wednesday, November 30th, 2022, and the time now is 9:24. Notice for this public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Thursday, November 17, and November 23rd. Again, today is Wednesday, November 30th, and it's 9:24. The bill that we'll be hearing this morning is Bill Number 363-36COR, introduced, authored by Senator Frank Blas Jr., co-sponsored by Senator Tony Ada, Vice Speaker Dina Rose Munro-Barnes, Speaker Theresa Lee, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Telo Taidigui, Senator Mary Camazza Torres, and Senator Chris Drenius, and also Senator Clint Rogel. An act to add a new section 421 to Chapter 4 of the Title I Guam Code annotated to adopt the Guam World War II Memorial Flag as an official flag for Guam in honor of all charmeros who died during or survived the enemy occupation of Guam during World War II, December 1941 to September 1945, and to authorize that it be flown alongside or right below the official flag of Guam from June 28 to August 10 and/or December 8 of every year and during any event that recognizes or honors a Guam World War II survivor. The physical note for Bill 363-36 was requested on November 18. Receive and disseminate to all senators via email by the Committee on Rules on November 22nd. Those testifying on behalf of Bill 363-36 are invited to the panel, and she is Monica Guzman. She's here to support it. And with that, we'll move to the general rules for this public hearing. Written testimony shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide my legislative staff with your written testimony for photocopying. Testimony may be read, and lengthy testimony should be summarized to about five minutes. Those testifying will be allowed to present oral testimony. Once you are done, please remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony, as may be desired by members of the committee. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or motive of any senator or any individual's testifying is not permitted. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the public hearing room. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for this proceedings. Individuals who failed to maintain proper form and decorum may be, will be restricted from providing oral testimony and will be escorted from the room. When you speak, when you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone. Please state your name and your title for the record. I'd like to acknowledge that my colleagues that have joined me this morning, we have Senator Frank Blas and Senator Telo Taidigui. I'd ask Senator Blas to please give his opening statement, and then we'll proceed with Ms. Guzman making her, giving her testimony.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you for all that are in attendance today. Thank you, Ms. Guzman, for being here too, as well. Bill 363-36COR, very simply, is an act that would be able to create and officially recognize a flag to honor Guam's World War II survivors, and those who not only survived but unfortunately who had passed, who had perished during the war, and to continue to pay homage, honor, and respect to these individuals who we've characterized and recognized as Guam's greatest generation. Mr. Chair, this bill came about as a result of discussions that I had, as, I'm taking off my hat now, as basically the founder of the Guam War Survivors Memorial Foundation, along with former Senator and Chairman of the Menengen Memorial Foundation, former Senator Willie Flores. And ironically, it was an event that we were both sitting at, and in an observation of, again, you know, are those who had suffered and died through World War II. And our discussion quickly went to what other ways, what better ways can we continue to honor our survivors, you know, past many of the events that they have, or just so that we can, as a reminder, not just to our island, to our people, but to the world, of what has happened, what happened on Guam from December of 1941 to September of 1945? You know, during those times, Guam, our people of Guam, were the only population, was the only community, you know, attached, if you will, to the United States that has ever been occupied by an enemy force in any war that the United States has ever been in. Our people were subjected to suffrages, pain, death, and a lot of times because of their loyalty they had, not just to their country, but to their people, to the people of the island. And in this, what we wanted to do is basically an opportunity to create a lasting legacy and a lasting reminder, you know, for our island, to our people, of what our people had to endure during those trying times. This conversation quickly went to meeting with a locally known artist, Mr. Ron Castro, who has assisted in being able to develop the concept of what the flag design would be. of what the flag design would be. What we wanted to provide is basically something that was simple yet very profound in its depiction, you know, on the flag, and something that can maybe relatable to our island. And so, you know, in keeping with, and if you can recall, first off, our, the official seal of Guam, our Guam flag, you know, with the palm tree or the coconut tree and the eastern or the western cliff lines of Guam, with primarily, you know, Punta del Sol Montes or Two Lovers Point. We wanted that same kind of a concept, but also recognizing what it was for, hasu. We use the word hasu in this. Hasu in Chamoros means remember. And remember, and right below the word hasu is the years nineteen forty-one to nineteen forty-five. Remember nineteen forty-one to nineteen forty-five, what happened on Guam. Remember that. Remember that in behalf, in honor of those who had died and suffered through that war. There are some people that have asked, why did we take nineteen forty-five? Well, if you take a look at the Hopkins Report that was conducted, the investigation of the report that was conducted in nineteen forty-seven, first off, while our island was, for lack of a better term, liberated in nineteen forty-four, many of our people were still suffering in nineteen forty-five. As a matter of fact, there were still individuals that were severely injured or killed as a result of still sporadic gunfire, the, you know, and having to be victimized or stepping over the ornament or the armaments, the shells, unexploded ordinances that still remain, that continue to remain on this island. And so, you know, when you take a whole population, when you take a whole community who was so basically liberated in nineteen forty-four, it wasn't just, okay, war's ended, go back home, let's go back to our lives. They had to rebuild their lives. They had to rebuild their lives. They had to rebuild their homes. They had to find their family. There are many stories that we've heard of young children who, you know, were staying with relatives or friends until they could find their parents. And that continued to exist past, you know, the August tenth nineteen forty-four, if you will, deadline or interpretation of when the war ended on Guam. It did not end in nineteen forty-four. Okay, it was still, they were still suffering in nineteen forty-five. And so what this flag represents is a homage and a tribute to those who died and suffered through World War Two, the occupation of Guam by enemy forces during World War Two. So what this bill would do is basically recognize that there is a flag, what the flag will look like, the dimensions, the design of the flag, and when the flag is authorized to be, is authorized to be flown. The bill calls for the flag to be flown every June twenty-eighth to August tenth and every December eighth of every year. Why those dates? June twenty-eighth was the date that we recognized Guam War Survivors Memorial Remembrance Day. August tenth is the day that we basically pay homage and tribute to those individuals who died and were killed in Seguin. Those are traditionally on our island, those days that we use to remember what had happened during World War Two. Why December eighth? Guam was invaded. Guam was captured, was invaded by the enemy forces on December eighth. So those are the official dates that we will be recognized as the official dates that we can fly the flag, as well as any time that there is an honor, we're paying homage or we're paying honor to not just our survivors, but to what had happened during World War Two here on Guam. So, Mr. Chair, that's what this bill is for, and I really would like support on this, on this bill so that we can continue to pay, you know, our respect to the generations that have to live through that, but so to ensure that the generations that come after us will never forget what happened on Guam. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Ms. Guzman?
Good morning. Buenos hafa de, Senator Blas, Senator Sinagastin, and Senator Tidigui. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present today in support of Bill three three six, three six three dash three six C O R. My name is Monica Okada Guzman, Taotao Mangilau. I'm here to support the passage of this bill. To create a flag that will honor those that we call the greatest generation of all for our future is a visual recognition of the suffering and the strength of our people of Guam. It's a beautiful flag. It's very clean, and as far as the design, I think it's a beautiful flag. And, you know, today, there are many people on Guam, our children, our grandchildren, that don't understand what happened during the war. You know, they just know that, you know, World War Two was here on Guam. But I think this will be a visual recognition and a visual reminder to everyone that our people did suffer, and through the strength of our culture, through the strength of our faith, and through the strength of our people, we were able to survive and rebuild, as Senator Blas said, you know? It was part of rebuilding our island, rebuilding our families, rebuilding our lives. And I visualize ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, these flags hanging, flying all over the island, and it'll just be a visual reminder for our kids because they, you know, they read about it, they hear about it, but to have a visual reminder, and it's so beautiful. And, you know, the collaboration of the Guam War Survivors Memorial with the Menengen Memorial Foundation, I mean, that's how things get done here on Guam. It's through partnerships, through relationships, through collaborations. And now with the support of the Guam Legislature, I ask that you pass this bill so that, you know, today is November thirtieth. I don't know, Senator Blas, if we have flags to hang on December eighth because it says here? And I don't know if this will be done in time for December eighth, but I think it's just a very good, it's a very good example of what can happen with collaboration, with partnership, to honor our people. There have been many events and activities that have happened over the course of the years. This year is the seventy-eighth anniversary of the liberation of Guam, and it's just appropriate that we do this now. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Guzman. Senator Tidigui, do you have any comments you'd like to make on this bill, three six three?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, Monica. Thank you for being here and providing some, you know, history and the importance of remembering our greatest heroes. My father is ninety-three years old, and he's a survivor. And his story, though it hasn't been told in some books, but his story is, and he's told us children how he had to carry the mines, you know, with his other cousins, taking it from Inalahan and walking all the way to Chalampago, holding these mines during the war. Every time we drive down to Inalahan, he always tells me other stories too, and then the same one's over, but, you know, his memory is good. When this bill came up, my father called me to ask me about who made the design for this flag. And he asked me, because he couldn't be here today, you know, and I wish we could do Zoom, Mr. Chair. We'd probably get more people showing up at these public hearings if we allow Zoom. But he knew I was a co-sponsor of it, and he understands the intent and the meaning and to show the respect of those who've passed away and those who are still alive. But he asked the question about the design of the flag. What he saw, he felt, was not really showing the suffering that our people had gone through. A flag like that, if we want to remember, we want to be able to look at the design and see it without words, the suffering our people went through, and to remember them. So he had asked if there was any, like, he goes, was there a contest? Could we got involved or to draw anything, you know, to actually have put it in front, samples to be put in front of those who are still alive today? Because if anybody's been through, you know, something so traumatic like that and look at a design and it reminds them, then those are the ones that should depict what design that flag should be. So are you familiar with any of how this design came about on the flag?
Senator, I think that the design in front of us is a very clean and, you know, it's very clean and it reminds us of our, you know, the symbolism stated in the bill, I believe, is powerful, is very powerful. And, you know, we need to move forward. Yes, we rebuilt, and we rebuilt our lives, we rebuilt our island. But, you know, every liberation, personally, I go through a very emotional time because I am part Japanese, you know? And for many years, I went through this inner turmoil because of my Japanese heritage, you know? I've been involved with the Guam Nikke Association, and I've learned that, you know, war does a lot of things to people, and people do things during war that, under normal circumstances, they probably wouldn't do. And war's crazy, war is terrible. But I've learned that we need to look forward, we need to remember, and that's why I like the fact that it has the word hasu in it because we have to remember. But we also have to look forward, and we have to move forward. And I think, you know, I think the word itself, hasu, is very symbolic.
Okay, let me ask that question again. Do you know if the design of the flag was done in a way to involve other, like, our survivors today to make a choice on what the flag should look like? Are you aware of that? Just yes or no?
I think that the artist that was involved is very, I mean, I know Ron personally.
Who?
The artist.
Who's the artist?
The senator said it was Ron Castro.
Ron Castro, okay.
I know him personally.
Okay, why don't I ask you this? So there was none. Do you think that that should be done with this flag? That different designs should be created and then given to our current survivors to have them the opportunity to choose which flag should be the flag that represent what they went through, the trials, the tribulations, the atrocities that they went through to pick? Do you think that should happen?
I think the collaboration between the two nonprofits, I think, is a very strong.
Yeah, but these nonprofits were not part of the war. They didn't, you know, they didn't experience the war. Ron Castro was never in the war. That's why I'm saying, don't you think we should have those who are living today decide what that flag should look like? Or at least choose, have some choice in the matter?
I think, I think the collaboration, I think the effort between the Guam War Survivors Memorial Foundation and the Menengen Memorial Foundation, I think it's a great collaboration. And the concept of creating a flag is very noble and is very positive. And I think, I believe that what the design that we have here is very clean, it's very beautiful, and the word itself, hasu, you know? I think that we have something in front of us, and I believe that it's beautiful, you know? I don't, like I said.
So you're not going to answer my question, Monica? The question is, I asked, well, okay, you're not answering my question. If these, you know, the Armanamco, those who were in the war, should actually have an opportunity to look at different designs and choose from there? You mentioned earlier, you know, to have this bill passed, you know? I don't, I think something is important, there's no doubt in my mind. You know, I signed up on this because I think we should remember them and always remember them. And when my father, you know, his time to meet his maker is gone, I don't have those stories being told to me anymore. They won't be. But every time I'll see a flag that flies on that day, I'll remember my dad and what he went through. I mean, that's the whole purpose of this, and that's why I signed up on this bill. But I really think that we shouldn't rush this because there are people out there, my father included, who want to have a say on what this flag should look like because they're the ones that experienced the war, not Will Flores or, you know, Rick Castro. I mean, they can hear the stories too and try to provide something close to it. But I really think it should be those who are living today who went through that to look at a flag. So I'm just going to leave it at that because you said earlier, it might not get passed by December eighth to put it out. If it doesn't, I'm fine with it, as long as we put something up there that's going to be there forever. It's, we're not going to change this. Once this flag comes up, we're not going to turn around and change it. It's going to be there forever because we don't have that many survivors left on our island. So I would just want to do it right the first time. And I'm already hearing from our survivors now that they want a choice on what this flag should look like. So I thank you so much for being here, and I truly, I am, I'm with you a hundred percent that we should always remember what had happened, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tidigui. Senator Blas, do you have any questions you'd like to pose before I do the closing?
Well, I'd just like to be able to, and thank you very much to my colleague for registering the concern, and I recognize it, I appreciate, okay?
It's my dad.
I understand. I understand that full well, okay? And I want to give to assurances to your father and to any survivors and individuals who are watching, you know, this hearing. First off, as was mentioned by Ms. Guzman here, of the collaboration between the two organizations, you're right, you know, in neither of the organizations, actually, I stand corrected, you know? The Menengen Memorial Foundation was founded with individuals who were members, survivors of the war. The Guam War Survivors Memorial Foundation has its own, for lack of a better term, informal board with war survivors that are there. And I think that through experience and recognizing that there's never going to be a complete consensus of what, you know, in this case, the flag should look like. What we wanted to present and provide is, again, a simple yet profound design for this flag so that it provides the opportunity and provides that necessity to remember. Some individuals have gruesome memories of the war. Some were too young to even remember what happened during the war. Some did not, never have, will never have the opportunity to be able to contribute to what their experiences were in the war. And so what this flag and its design represents is is an interpretation, for lack of a better term, or a symbol so that it, we remember what has happened here, or we learn what has happened here and remember what has happened here back in World War Two. Monica, you brought up a very good point here in that, you know, many of our, many individuals in our younger generation on Guam don't even fathom that a war. don't even fathom that a war existed here. It's very hard to fathom that over 80 years ago, one of the most, the very first battle that occurred on this island during that occupation was right here, was in this vicinity. The last defense of Guam before its surrender was right here. We're standing and we're sitting in these hollowed grounds for that purpose. And what this flag will do is will help us and would hopefully generate the interest in future generations and in this current generation to look back into the history and see what has happened. So that it doesn't happen again. And we pray that it doesn't happen again. So I can appreciate that there is concern as to whether or not this is a true interpretation or truly depicts what the island had to suffer through. And if we were to think, okay, we can go about it a better way. We had two organizations that collaborated on this. Two organizations that this community has looked to be able to continue to remember these events and to honor our survivors. And I put it out to any detractor, okay, on whether or not we should even create a flag to do this. Because you can do better. Or you can do more. It's not for the survivors to do this, it's for us so that we can honor them. It took us over 60 years to come up with an organization that honors our survivors. What happened before then? We don't know how long, quite honestly, the Guam War Survivors Memorial Foundation will continue to exist or the Menengen Memorial Foundation. But what we wanted to do is make it a lasting legacy. That even if these organizations were to pass on, that there is continuous reminder for that. So I can respect and I honor and I appreciate that the design could be even more. And it could have been. But I believe in introducing this legislation, I believe in the, after the collaboration that was done, that it would represent the honor and respect that are those that survived or those that died through the war are going to continue to get perpetually. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Blas. I'm in support of this, having a flag. I'd be a strong supporter of having another flagpole erected so it's adjacent to the Guam and the U.S. flag. Not below any Guam flag, because why? And I'll make sure it's part of the committee report, the history of the Guam flag, how it started, 1917 and forward. And we're talking about something that, and I'll ask the AV to please display, this is what the flag will look like that's being, that's on the bill. And I ask the audience, the public, and the Manamco, take a look at it. Because I know for a fact, when my parents were alive, they were survivors, and I'd ask them about the war. And they said, it's not something we need to talk about, but I'll tell you a little bit, boy. I helped build the runway up at the airport. I have families that walk Menengen. It's not something, I believe my father would not, if he was alive today, he wouldn't want a picture about the war zone look like, "hassu." And I think that's the key here. Think about it. And I've had it posted now. I would ask the audience, the public, we'll wait a few days, get a few days to keep the bill open. And then we'll present, then I'll ask the author of the bill how far he wants to move on it. And if he wants to move on it, we'll submit the committee report and we'll move from there. But for me, the message is to remember. That's all the message is. Because there are many things in everybody's life, nobody wants to look at those pictures anymore. It's a memory and we leave it alone. And we cherish it and we move on from there. Some we don't care to cherish, but we move on from there. And with that, there's no additional testimonies. But the committee will continue to accept testimony. Please submit it to the mailroom of the Guam Legislature or through email at senators@senatorjoeasandalguacine@gmail.com. I think, Senator Blas, you gave your closing, correct? Do you have something to say? Yes, Ms. Guzman?
Sir, if I may, I would just like to add one more thing to my testimony. And I, what Senator Blas said about the collaboration, I think, is very important. And then your comments also about "hassu." But I also want to bring up that all of the mayors created a village flag for all of the villages. And that was done, what, maybe 10, 12 years ago? And that flag is a source of pride for all of the villages. And they all have their own individual seal, their own individual flag, their own village flower, village, you know, all the sites and everything. And to me, "hassu" is very important, like you said. And, you know, it's a very simple but very unique reminder, visual reminder. And so I really hope and that you will support passage of this bill. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank everyone for attending this public hearing and for providing feedback and suggestion. Bill 363-36COR is duly heard by the committee and the public hearing is now adjourned. It's now 9:58. And Sisus Massey, and we'll take a few minute recess before we begin Bill 348 from Senator Telo Tarrigu. Thank you. Half a day and good morning. The Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriation, and Housing is now called to order. Today is Wednesday, November 30th. The time now is 10:07. Public notice for the public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Thursday, November 17th and on November 23rd. Again, today is Wednesday, November 30th, and it is now 10:07. The bill we'll be hearing now is Bill 348-36LS, introduced by Senator Telo Tarrigu, co-sponsored by Senator Frank Blas, Senator Clint Rigel, and Senator Tony Ada, Senator Sabina Perez, and Senator Brown. An act to add section, a new section, 58128.7 to Article 1 of Chapter 58, Title 12, Guam Code Annointed, relative to mitigating the housing affordability crisis by authorized tax incentive for eligible business entities that construct a minimum number of affordable housing units and to creating the Affordable Housing Assistance Fund and to require the deposit of affordable housing business previous tax payments into the Affordable Housing Assistance Fund. There was a physical note requested and it was issued and disseminated to all senators on November 10. Those testifying on behalf of Bill 348-36 are invited to the panel and they are: Mr. Carlos Camacho, Blue Water Realty, Glenn Manglona, Blue Water Realty. We have GIDA representative. We have Matt Bazza and Mr. Carlos Berdallion from GIDA. And with that, I will start with the general rules for this public hearing. Written testimony shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide my legislative staff with your written testimony for photocopying. Testimony may be read and lengthy testimony should be summarized to about five minutes. Those testifying be allowed to present oral testimony. Once you are done, please remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony may be desired by members of the committee. Questioned testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of any senator or any individual's testifying is not permitted. Anybody who is in this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the public hearing room. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for this proceeding. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum may be, will be restricted from oral testimony and will be escorted from the room. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone. Please state your name and your title for the record. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me this morning. We have Senator Telo Tarrigu, the author of the bill, and Senator Frank Blas, co-sponsor of the bill. And with that, I ask Senator Tarrigu to please present her opening statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for scheduling this public hearing on Bill 348 and for the opportunity to introduce the measure. Mr. Chair, Bill 348 proposes to increase the affordable housing inventory on Guam, especially at a time when the price of a single-family home continues to increase, becoming out of reach to families across our island who are already struggling with higher food, fuel, health care, and energy costs. According to the article published by a local media company on October 3rd, 2022, Guam's Guam, especially Guam's Guam, especially at a time when the price of single-family homes continue to increase, becoming out of reach for families across our island who are already struggling. And according to the media release, for a single-family dwelling has reached $426,000, a substantial increase from the media price of $299 in the pre-pandemic 2019 and $335 in 2020. The 2020 figure represents a 12% increase from 380 in 2021, 380,000 that is, in 2001. If approved, Bill 348 prioritizes homeowners for families who are hoping to buy a home in today's tough housing market, but find it difficult to do so as home prices are rising faster than they're able to set aside enough money for the closing costs. Mr. Chair, under Guam law, developers that build at least 25 affordable housing units are eligible for incentives, including BPT, income, real property, and use tax benefits. Bill 348 proposes to extend these tax benefits to eligible developers in exchange for construction, constructing no less than five affordable housing units. However, Mr. Chair, Bill 348 recognizes there are smaller construction companies out there who, when compared to other companies that have already the capacity and resources to build a minimum of 25 affordable homes, units, may have interest in doing their small part to increase the inventory of affordable housing units on Guam. And this bill provides the opportunity for them to do so. Mr. Chair, Bill 348 requires that for developers engaging in the construction of not less than five, but fewer than 25 affordable housing units, the BPT payments that are generated from the purchase or construction of an affordable housing unit shall be deposited into Affordable Housing Assistant Fund. Instead of providing a developer a 100% BPT abatement, Bill 348 proposes to use the BPT as a valid funding source to help qualified borrowers close their home loan by requiring funds to be applied to their down payment slash closing cost requirements. I'll give two examples of how I believe Bill 348 will help our families reach the finish line and secure a home through proposed use of BPT proceeds from down payment slash closing cost requirements. Example one, construction cost, $300,000, BPT, $15,000. Total, $3,115,000. 6% bank closing is at $18,900. Less BPT assistance would yield $15,000. And out-of-pocket for that first-time homeowner, the homeowner who wants to purchase, is only $3,900. I'll give you an example on, on construction cost for a $250,000 home. The BPT would yield $12,500. Total is $262,500. 6% banking closing cost is $15,750. Less BPT assistance, negative $12,500. Out-of-pocket for that person is $3,900. Additionally, Mr. Chair, Bill 348 requires GIDA to develop an application process and the appropriate rules and guidelines necessary to facilitate BPT deposits and financial assistance for down payment and other closing costs for qualified first-time home borrowers. Each payment shall be made to a financial institute through escrow and only after the borrower has met all eligibility requirements established by GIDA. Mr. Chair, Bill 348 recognizes the urgency of using every policy at our disposal as a government, as we've done in the past to include direct appropriation to Guam Housing Corporation and the use of issued funds to help families get past the finish line, particularly when inflation continues to push the finish line further from them. Between 2012 and 2022, 6.3 million in first-time homeowners assistance program grants issued by the Guam Housing Corporation to 784 families yielded approximately $153 million in additional economic activity through services associated with real estate, banking, escrow, appraisers, and title business transactions. The housing affordability crisis facing our island creates a huge barrier for families who work hard every day to raise their children, secure a good job, and put some money aside to build a home. Bill 348 invests in our families and will lead to new communities, which means additional economic activity in the form of new or expanded grocery and retail stores, telecommunications providers, and restaurants. So, Mr. Chair, I look forward to the discussions, including any amendments that may be needed going forward, including recommendations I received via email from GIDA on the possibility of assigning the Guam Housing Corporation, instead of GIDA, the responsibility of administering the proposed Affordable Housing QC program, including management of the proposed Affordable Housing Assistant Fund. So I thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity, and I'm looking forward to the comments being made today to strengthen this bill for our families on Guam. Si, just, mase.
All right, and thank you, Senator Tadegui. We have three individuals testify actively to, assisted by Mr. Bazza. So why don't we go ahead and before we, we have GIDA start out? Mr. Berdallio, sir? Just turn on the mic, please. Si, mea.
Okay. Thank you, Senator. Half a day, Senator Joe S. San Augustine. Joe T. is your dad. And members of the Committee on, Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing. And thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 348-36 LS. GIDA supports the bill's efforts to encourage the construction of additional affordable housing units in Guam. Current Guam law allows for contractors and developers to receive a qualifying certificate for the construction of affordable housing as long as no less than 25 affordable housing units are built. Bill 348 seeks to expand the Affordable Housing QC program by establishing an income tax rebate and use tax exemption for contractors and developers that construct no less than five, but no greater than 24 affordable housing units. Based on our review of the bill, the tax benefits proffered are in line with existing law, and the bill contains adequate language to define the eligibility requirements for this specific QC activity. However, GIDA has some concerns with the proposed Affordable Housing Assistance Fund that Bill 348 seeks to establish. First, there is some question as to the implication of the rerouting of the total sum of business privileged taxes from these projects to the fund. The BPT bonds specifically pledge a portion of the BPT for debt service. Bills introduced since the issuance of the BPT bonds for brand-new tax credits or abatements specifically limit those activities to unpledged BBT. GIDA recommends similar language in Bill 348 to avoid any ambiguity. Second, the goals and activities of the fund seem to, seem to supplement efforts of already existing government Guam programs to assist first-time homeowners, such as, GIDA is aware that the government, the Guam Housing Corporation does already have some similar program. As such, there should be an evaluation for any duplication of efforts with this new program. Likewise, as the experts on housing in Guam, GIDA defers to GHC and the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority for their guidance and housing needs in Guam and recommends they administer this new program. As always, GIDA stands ready to assist this committee as the bill moves through the legislative process. If you have any questions regarding my testimony, please feel free to contact me. And I'm reading this on behalf of our administrator, Mel Mandiola.
Thank you, sir. Senator, I mean, correction, Mr. Camacho. Carlos, do you have any testimony you want to provide? I think, you're done, right? You're good? Okay.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Senator San Augustine, Senator Frank Blas, Senator Telo Tadegui. For many, many years, before I read my testimony, I've been an advocate on affordable housing on different venues through this August body. And many times, I just want to recollect one little story before I read my testimony, and it's probably in here already. Senator Tadegui mentioned some framework of some of my framework. I guess we're all thinking the same way, but I guess I'll repeat it. But in 2012, as she mentioned, Senator Ben Pangolino introduced the first $500,000 seed money for the Down Payment and Closing Cost Program, as Carlos Berdallio mentioned, that Guam Housing was administering. It was very successful. After that funds ran out, it came back to the legislature to try to find a sustainable funding source. And what Senator Tadegui mentioned, the issued fund, I would like to thank previous existing senators. She was chairwoman of housing also, Tina Barnes, and Speaker Wampat, who, and Director of DOA, Tony Blas at that time, where we identified the issued funds. And at that time, we had over $3 million. It was a very difficult source of fund because they were saying, what do we rather pay? Give it to Guam Housing for the down payment program? Or shall we pay down the deficit at that time? It was a debate amongst the 15 senators then. Fortunately, it went through, and I'm glad, as Senator Tadegui reported, and Guam Housing got in their books year-to-date. From 2012, starting from the seed money to $500,000 to the multimillion dollars of issued funds that have been transferred in up to 2022, it helped over 784 families. And that $6 million worth of funds yielded $153 million of construction and real estate purchase. Now, Carlos brought up a great point that we've got to be just very careful how we put the language so we don't violate the 3% of the 5% bond because of what we secured many, many years ago for the tax refund. I just want to make it very clear, there are no, these revenues as generated, the BPT, is starting from ground zero. There's, we are not taking from any BPT revenue source. This is new economic revenue to entice the same example I just gave you earlier on the issued funds. So it's going to be an economic multiplier. Yes, that's why the original QC one, now, where it says 25 homes or more, I wanted to also identify the DNA and the founder of that format. Public Law 23195, or 23135, I'm sorry, was introduced by Senator Joe T. San Augustine, your dad, and Francis Santos, another great timer that Governor Ada introduced the CAHOT program that's being administered by Guam Housing Corporation. Well, that was the gist of the 25-home minimum affordable housing program 26 years ago. 26 years ago. From that format, Senator Tony La Morena, on the 24th legislature, introduced 24266, made further amendments to the 25-home minimum of your dad, Senator San Augustine, 23135. And basically, that was the gist. Now, when you go 25 homes or more, then you got to, of course, have, it's big pockets, big developer doing it. Years and years later, after we've seen that, as you guys described and watched, the inventory shortfall, the rising cost of home, right? How do we get these smaller contractors to get involved? I did chat with Matt here from GIDA and Ed Camacho from GIDA many months ago, and your office, Senator San Augustine, also, before this bill was introduced by Senator Tadegui. What is the framework? I'm not a bill writer, but I can provide ideas to your policy guys, and that's why this came about. And we're still polishing it up with a recommendation by GIDA. And that's when Matt and Ed said, you know, we got to have some type of number threshold. So I figured five units and below 24 as the idea. And this is what this bill's framework's all about. Hopefully, what will happen here is this will entice the smaller contractors to get involved. Now, the original QC one, the 25 homes or below, has a four-legged tax benefit, a BPT exemption, which means zero, a user tax exemption, and two other, I think, real property and corporate tax exemption. What we were looking for is a sustainable source of funding to have the same economic multiplier as what this same August body did when they appropriated these issued funds. And I'm glad from 2012 to 2022, yielded $153 million, as Senator Tadegui described. Now, those are the other vendors that are paying BPT that was not part of it. If you entice construction activity, entice escrow accounts, entice real estate agents involved, all those guys are paying, we're not asking an exemption from them. The exemption's coming from the other layer of the, of the format, which is the contractor or developer selling the home or building the home. But you've got to remember, it's tied to an approval. If Mr. and Mrs., I guess, as an example, John Doe gets a loan approval from the bank to close their loan. And when they get their approval, they'll go to, in this case, his law will say to GIDA for assistance. And the reason it was written at that time to GIDA is, yes, Carlos Berdallio is correct, the program already exists at Guam Housing Corporation. But Guam Housing Corporation has a rules and regs because that funding source came from the issued funds, and it was capped at $10,000. And if you look at the history on that source, Guam Housing Corporation had to come back three times to this body to keep increasing that cap because of the inflationary rate, as the senator described, the rising cost of construction. And to this body, Senator San Augustine, you gave the authority of the Guam Housing Board to have their own decision based on the area median cost of home so they don't have to keep coming back to the legislature to keep amending it. This is why, in this particular bill, we decided to use, as we did in a previous Manamco bill earlier, the Area Media Income Bill approach. Under the Area Median Income approach, you're targeting the low, the moderate, I mean, the medium and the moderate. And in my testimony, which I provided, it has the published income tables from HUD, from USDA, as what's established every quarter of the year when it gets adjusted, when both federal agencies adjust it for the Western Pacific. Why that format is very important is, one of the questions in the many, many years is, they keep asking, so what's the right number? Is 100,000 the right number? Is 200,000 the right number as affordability? Well, as we've seen in the Down Payment and Closing Cost of Guam Housing, when the idea was great and it was capped at 200,000 at that time, but they couldn't service the people because people's cost of construction was 250, then it went to 300. So this legislative body keeps amending the law until, again, as I suggested, as I stated earlier, you guys gave the flexibility of the Guam Housing Board to finally make that decision. So by using an income... So by using an income published threshold, everybody's income will first meet the low, moderate income table. And everybody who maintains their credit rating or lowers their debt ratio will then borrow based on what their capacity is, as long as they meet the definition of first-time homeowner and meet the income limits. But I wanted to assure, I am aware of the 3% of the 5%. A QC1 already exempts the BPT for 25 homes, so they don't pay BPT. From 5 to 25, we're taking out the one-legged benefit and making it, becoming a sustainable revolving fund so that funds can be available when that applicant is ready to close their loan. And when they close the loan, it becomes an economic multiplier, as we've seen in the Scheda Funds. So therefore, I, with the recommended amendment that GIDEA will provide, and this committee will change to Guam Housing Corporation other than GIDEA administering it, I do support that idea because Guam Housing already seen the process. I've talked to Guam Housing about this bill over the week before this came in, and only one thing they asked, and I, that will be up to this body, is that they're, that can they put some type of verbiage on no double dipping? I'm not sure what that means, but they further describe what that means. So if Mr. and Mrs. John Cruz build a home for $200,000 and the BPT's 5% is $10,000, they'll get a $10,000 automatic revolving fund to their closing. But what they wanted, what Guam Housing wanted was, it doesn't say here that they can still apply at Guam Housing for the other assistance. So they get another $10,000. So they just wanted to make sure there's no double dipping, but I'm not sure how to write that part. I'm just suggesting what they brought up to me. And I said, I hope you could put that in your testimony. But I told them I'll mention it in my verbal testimony. So that's it. I'm not, you know, just so that there's no double dipping. And the reason why we say no double dipping is because there may be some small contractors that may not, that may not apply for the GIDEA QC for this, if this law, if this bill comes into law. They may not want to go through the bureaucracy, the bureaucratic process, and all that stuff. And if they do, if they don't get a QC, they won't qualify to transfer that BPT to their client or to their customer. And that customer then will then avail themselves to the regular down payment program that Guam Housing administers, if funds available. So that's the two differences. There'll be ones that's sustainable, one that's based on funds available on the general fund when you guys, if there's any more Scheda Funds every end of December, as the banks advertise. So therefore, I support the intent of the bill. Again, I'd like to thank the original founder that gave us the movement 26 years ago, your dad, Francis Santos, and the many people in between that. There was a modifying the many affordable housing bill from Tina Barnes, Speaker Wampat, Tony La Morena, right? And you know what you guys just did recently this year? This body had amended the Chamor Land Trust law. So now financing and funding for construction activity for their homes could happen. If this happened, this could be an infusion for these families, thousands of these families. I'm just talking about one market that can have access to some type of assistance in their closing costs. So therefore, I hope that we can get your support in moving this, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Camacho.
Totally different from whatever.
Yes, a little bit of difference, but I know you're going to fix that. Senator Tidagui, would you like to ask a question now? Or we'll ask Senator Frank, and then I will leave you for questions and closing. Senator Blas, do you have any questions for the folks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, gentlemen, for being here. And Carlos, thank you very much. Yeah, I read your letter and listened to your testimony. Thanks, I got full, well-rounded, okay? Smart move, okay? And thank you, Uncle Carlos, okay? And Matt, thank you also. Am I reading this wrong? Is this, this bill is basically to be able to create and to build homes? Is that what this bill is for? Basically? Matt?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, okay. So, and I ask that question because, you know, Mr. Chair, and while Guam Housing isn't here, I did read Guam Housing's testimony on this thing. And a lot of it was referenced to the financing or, you know, the availability, the affordability of the home to the homeowner. When I was looking at the bill, and it's the affordability of the builder to build the home and the ability to build the home, okay? So I just want to make that very clear, that that's what this bill is for. It's for, like you said, Carlos, this is basically expand the opportunity, you know, to build the homes at a rate that is affordable for individuals to be able to purchase the homes. Am I correct? And that? Carlos? Yeah? Yeah. Okay.
You're correct.
Mr. Camacho, okay? Is, the bill basically is to expand the opportunity and the ability to be able to build homes so that it becomes affordable for individuals who, in, you know, less than opportune times, can't afford to purchase a home. Is that, am I correct?
Senator, that's correct. And the reason we decided to do a 5 to 24-minute threshold at smaller contractors or the operators, in the past decade, we've been seeing the same thing to barrier to housing. The lack of down payment and closing costs. And this is why Senator Pangolino introduced that many, many years ago. But, you know, we had to find a sustainable source. But if you make a smaller operator involve, their overhead and operation is not as big as the big-time player with the military buildup. It's costing the cost of goods to go up.
Right.
In theory, we're hoping that these small guys, if we educate these guys out there that there are some tax benefits for them, then the cost of their construction costs will go down. And the great news is the H2 workers, if we don't have workers in Guam, for the definition of housing is approved by UCIS to bring in. So this guy will have access to the workforce in that. And as a smaller contractor, their overhead and cost of operation supposedly is supposed to be a lot more affordable. But I'm not a.
No, I appreciate it. And that's what, again, the theory.
Yeah.
You know, and the concept. And it seems something that I feel is viable and something that we should really look into. I thank you, Mr. Berdallio. I can understand GIDEA's concern. You know, we do have, in fact, two entities, you know, other than GIDEA to be able to deal with, you know, the housing issue. The financing issue, I can understand. But in as far as the implementation and the administration of the program, okay, I can agree with that. But I appreciate the testimony. I appreciate you bringing the concern. I think there is a happy medium to that, as Mr. Camacho had stated, to be able to move this forward. I am not, you know, I am in support of this bill, as is evident with my, you know, cosponsorship of this thing. We need to find a way to be able to bring, you know, housing costs down. And if this is a way to be able to capture that by, this is truly, you know, creative writing, to be able to find that loophole. And I want to thank you, you know, for, Mr. Camacho, for being able to look at that. And I want to thank the sponsor, the author of this legislation, you know, and being able to want to move this forward. I, you know, with the recommended change proposal in as far as the administration, as you have suggested, is it my understanding then that GIDEA has no problem with this?
That's correct, Senator. We recommend that Guam Housing actually administer the program.
Okay.
And we could be there to assist them in the financing portion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Carlos, Mr. Camacho, sounds good for you too with that?
Yeah, Guam Housing has the framework and format.
Okay.
And the only thing is, is we just have to separate the two different programs, which is easy to cut the pie in that one.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we, you know, we identify what the impediment is and we try to remove it. And thank you for the testimony and being able to do this. So I think that can be done in the committee, yes.
Senator, if I can add to that. So basically, the way that I think GIDEA sees it is, obviously, the underwriting of the tax, the QC application is something GIDEA can handle. You know, we have rules and regs, everything's in place, SOPs. It's the second part of the housing fund that I think what would happen is, optimally, I think the best way would happen is, if and when the bill becomes law and the program is stood up, basically, if a contractor or a developer were to come in and apply for this QC, they would say, okay, a requirement of this QC would be to move the BPT over to this, into this, into this program. You would have to comply with this program in order to avail of the tax benefits the QC offers. That's how the bill is written right now. Basically says, you get an income tax and your use tax. You also must take your, your BPTs must go into this separate fund, notwithstanding the issues, the highlight of unplugged versus pledged. Whatever system is set up, then if and when a QC is issued, it would state, okay, as a condition of receiving this QC for this specific 58128.7, you need to do this, you need to go to Guam Housing, for example, fill out the form, comply, do whatever you need to do there. You need to provide proof that you're complying with that program. And then that would be part of the QC, like, compliance process.
Yeah, yeah. It's kind of interesting because I was looking at your QC program. Maybe I said it for another reason, and I can appreciate it. I fully understand that, that process. But I also have to agree with Mr. Camacho in that, you know, if there is concern from anybody with regards to reducing the, you know, the business privilege tax and, you know, the, this is, this is new business. This is new income, okay? And so, you know, basically, it's a wash. I mean, it's not, it hasn't been obligated or hasn't been, you know, in the future and stuff. It hasn't even happened, okay? So I think that, you know, I think you properly addressed that concern. Mr. Camacho, did you want to add anything else?
Yeah, I just want, yes, it is new BPT that's created from that layer of contractor. But the contractor who buys goods from Home Depot, JK Tile.
They still pay it.
Or goes to the escrow, the title guarantee, Pacific American Title, all those stuff. All those guys pay GRT that we're not exempting from here.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
So those GRT are newly created.
Right.
But the layer that we're using is what's going to spur that economic multiplier.
And I appreciate it. That's why I'm excited about this, okay? And I think that it can work. But thank you very much for the testimony. And thank you to the author for being able to, not only to introduce it, but allowing me to be a co-sponsor to this. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Blas. You know, I'm in support of this program. I've always been supportive of finding affordable homes. And Carlos and I have talked about many other programs. We just got to go through one at a time and put the package together so it sells. The only concern I'm concerned about is that, hopefully, when they go, when they go to GIDEA, GIDEA has a list of all these contractors. And that if they want to say they're going to build five homes, it's not one today, it's five homes to be built. The reason why I say that, because in certain areas on Guam, you have developers that I think are trying to escape the community requirement that if you build so many homes, you've got to help with the infrastructure. Why do we have a two-inch pipe in this area? And all of a sudden, we have 10 brand-new homes? But they build it, like, get a permit once every six months or eight months so they can avoid that requirement. We need to strengthen that somehow. But I'm hoping that the contractors that participate in these five homes are not large contractors to begin with, and they scale down so they can take advantage of it. We need to focus on the small contractors, the contractors that need the help, need to get in the business, not be always subcontracted, but be a contractor and be able to do this. And that's the only thing I'm concerned about, is making sure that whoever's going to do this, you know, the double dipping, we can fix that. I'll work with the author of the bill. We'll make, we'll make the amendments that need to be made to protect the people of Guam, to protect the developers and so forth. But I'm just concerned about the, making sure there's community involvement. You know, when I say community involvement, if you're going to build five homes and you know there's only a two-inch pipe coming in there, water pipe, put a four-inch pipe. Because the homes that are further in are going to suffer because you sucked up all the water and water pressure. That's what I'm looking at. If there's a sewer line, upgrade any of the sewer line in the area you're putting in. Connect to the sewer line so we don't look at septic tanks in these areas. Put a four-inch, it's not that far. Let's work. Because I know that Senator Tidagui is focused on, let's help the people. But let's not rob Peter to feed Paul. Just work, make it all work for everybody. It's a plus-up. This is a great bill. I'm in full support of this bill at this point. As long as it's focused, there's no double dipping. I said, I'll work with the author and we'll make it work. And then from there on, we'll move on. Senator Tidagui, I have no further questions or further comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, first, I would like to thank, you know, Senator Blas for, you know, he, when I spoke to him about this bill, there was no hesitation whatsoever. He realizes the need for homes on Guam, especially affordable homes. So I'd like to thank him. But I also like to invite Senator San Agustin. You know, he was off island during that time during a family emergency. I knew he wanted to be a co-sponsor, so I'd like to incorporate him as a co-sponsor to this bill because, of course, you know, it's from his father to himself, you know, continuing the legacy of affordable homes on Guam is very important. But most especially, I'd like to thank Guam Housing for providing the testimony, GIDEA for being here today, and of course, Mr. Carlos Camacho, you know, the guru of all development and housing. And, you know, every one of us that sit up here, if we had a question, the first person we call is, you know, is Carlos Camacho because of your background, all the information. I mean, working tirelessly with the community and providing homes for our people. Unfortunately, we can't do anything about inflation. We can't do anything about, you know, the cost of goods going up. That's something this body can't do. But what we can do is find a way to increase the inventory. Because like anything, if you increase the inventory, the prices will go down. But when there's hardly no inventory on this island, of course, these homes are going to be so super-expensive. So that's the first thing. We need to increase the inventory. And then what the government of Guam can do is provide tax incentives so that people who want to own a home, who actually have the means to pay their mortgage, but they just don't have that down payment of $15,000, you know, to fork out. That's the hardest part. I mean, people today live paycheck to paycheck. Sometime, it's even worse than that. They're living on, you know, last week's paycheck and the week before or the two weeks before to try and catch up, and they can't seem to catch up. In the meantime, we're seeing more homeless people on the street. We're seeing more families moving in with each other, three families in one home. Something has to be done. And this is what this bill and those co-sponsors, and now Senator San Agustin being a co-sponsor. And again, I thank Senator Frank Blas for jumping on this right away, and all my other co-sponsors. I don't want to leave them out. But we need to do our part. Gentlemen, GIDEA, Guam Housing, let's get together and make these amendments so that we do it correctly. We're not breaking any laws. And we're encouraging these investors on Guam to continue to invest on our island for our people. Si duos mase, Mr. Chair. And thank you so much again for everyone being here. Merry Christmas to everybody. This is a good start.
Thank you, Senator Tidagui. With that, there is no other individuals to testify. On Bill 348-36 LS, the committee will receive, will continue to receive testimony as required and as needed. I will wait for the author to provide any additional amendments she would recommend. And we'll just make, prepare a committee report so we can submit it to the committee on Rules and get it on the floors whenever it's possible. You may submit your testimony to the mayor room of the Guam Legislature. You may submit your testimony to the mayor room of the Guam Legislature or through email at senatorjoessenagustin@gmail.com. Again, I want to thank everyone for attending this public hearing and for providing feedback and suggestions. Bill number 348-36 is duly heard by the committee, and the public hearing is now adjourned. It is now 10:50. Sisus Masai and Merry Christmas. Please be safe. Take care.